Well, yeah. We have occasion.
He's gonna have Bruce.
I have a radar that does track things. And then the state has cameras too.
Yes. Okay. Plug in.
I have a computer radar that climbs high speed.
Okay.
All right.
Here, here. We got an extension. We need that too.
Yeah, there's only this one here.
Here we go.
I was a voice guy. Good.
I've been so many presentations where we didn't have either a length of cord or multiple cords.
Thank you, Stacy. Thanks.
Call the church.
There's this. Okay.
But that can change.
Yep.
Sure taken away from Jenna.
Mr. Corbin?
That's your coffee.
How are you overdrive? That's it? Not too bad. Not too bad at all.
Share one of the bigger things we're seeing a lot of times is the ability to separate the circuits and having them separate.
I'll watch it. It starts more than anything.
All right. Welcome. We're gonna get started here. Statement to read and then we're getting on here. The purpose of today's work study session is for briefing for the commissioners on previously agreed upon issues and no action will be taken. This format allows commission members, staff, and architects to hold in-depth discussions. Future planning is moved forward with the jail addition project. No public hearings or public input will be received except for specific invitation of the commission for purposes of education on a specific topic. Any actions will be forwarded to a future regular commission meeting for action. Listen to various be discussed that listed and to small topics as needed may be added by the commissioners. The first discussion will be the project delivery methods available for the project. And Bruce from BKB will start this. Basically what we have to decide to move forward with the project, our next step is what's the delivery system going to be? There are three primary delivery systems we're gonna discuss today. Construction management agent, construction manager at risk, or general contractor. And I'm gonna turn it over to Bruce to give us the delivery options and we'll discuss what we want to look at.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good to see you all. So, there's really been three primary types of construction delivery projects, especially the construction projects in a lot in general. So, there's the general contractor approach, which is considered the typical or traditional, which is design bid build. So, we go through our entire process, work with the county, and finalizing all the design issues of the project, put together our final documents, and then once that's all compiled, you issue bids to general contractors. And there are pros and cons to the general contractor approach as well, and I'll be high level on some of those to go and discuss them. On the design bid build approach, which is the general contractor, I have a couple notes for myself as well, they're all gonna provide competitive bidding. So, this first one that talks about pros of competitive bidding process, all three options, which are design bid build, construction manager agent, construction manager at risk are your three primary types of delivery, they're all gonna provide competitive bidding process. So, that's the same. Ease of management as far as universally understood, yes. There's more probably general contractors out there than there are construction managers, so it's a fairly common approach that has been used for agents. I will say that most counties and cities that we're working with now across the country are using the construction management process for a variety of reasons. The cons that were listed for this is the contractor takes advantage of bidding process. So, one of my biggest issues with the general contractor approach is it's based on low bid. It's all based on low bid, but when it's a general contractor, I'll be quite candid, they are typically looking for, looking at those set of documents saying, you know what, there's a little discrepancy there, I think I can get a change order. So, it becomes a little bit of an adversarial relationship when you're dealing with those contractors because you're trying to make sure that we're doing the county due diligence and sticking to the budget, that we're fighting with them every step of the way for every nail and screw that they think was different. And so, general contractor approaches can be adversarial because in a general contractor approach, they're getting money every time there's a change order for overhead profit or whatever. On a construction management approach, they don't get any additional money for change orders. They're only, they only get additional money if the contract gets delayed and they get more on-site supervision. That's the only time you see them. So, that's kind of the general contractor. The change orders, again, the last two items that were listed there, owner has full exposure to change orders, delay claims, again, I hate to say it, the county would be subject to those no matter what type of process we go with. So, one of the things I really like about the construction manager approach that we have seen as a very really value to our clients is the way the construction manager approach is, is first off, they engage early in the process. So, you would all hire them as we're doing the design work. So, they're hand in hand. They're checking us, they're, you know, is that constructable? Is there an issue with that? Is that available material? So, there are kind of a second eyes for the county to make sure that we're doing what we need to do and we're getting the best product at the end of the day. So, it becomes a team approach. They also help to review the estimate and they help develop the estimate. So, again, they're part of the team. Typically, their pre-construction services for most CMs are not that expensive. I'll top my head, they're probably thirty to sixty thousand dollars for pre-construction services, but again, that'll come out in an RFP site process as well. The fees that a CM charges during the project ultimately are offset by what a general contractor would charge anyway. So, really, at the end of the day, some people say, well, isn't a lot more expensive with construction manager? No, it's not. Other than that pre-design phase upfront, the rest of it would be standard construction costs that would be in the project. The other thing too, that I should reference, a general contractor is gonna have a site superintendent, and depending upon the priority of this project for them, site superintendent might be there two hours in the morning, might be there every other day. It's hard to dictate, bless you, it's hard to dictate when that CM or the general contractor, because that's the way they typically operate. In a construction management approach, every construction manager I've dealt with assigns a site superintendent that's in that trailer on the site. So, your responsiveness, your awareness of what's going on in the project is a lot better with construction manager. No, the other thing, and the other half, I can go with this, so, construction manager, when you put the projects together, you have multiple bid packages. You have sprinkler system, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, in this case, attention equipment contractor, masonry, precast limestone, all various finishes of building, roofing contractor. Once we're done, we'll be putting together probably anywhere from thirty to thirty-four bid packages. The bid packages are based on the different subcontractors you're gonna bid to work. General contractor, a lot of times, they'll put together numbers, and they might work with their drywaller that they dealt with before, and they're gonna work to make sure they get the number they want out of the drywall. What you'll get is for that drywall bid, you'll get four or five bids on that one particular group that'll be opened up on a public bid, make sure you're getting a very competitive bidding for that. The other thing it does is it does support and encourage local bidding because instead of a general contractor, now you got a painting contractor. They can't bond for a big project like this, but they can bond for their little piece of it, and you get a lot more exposure of local contractors. So, I like, construction manager approach does encourage the use of local trades a lot, and I think that's a big value. So, biggest differences, so again, this talks about CM, construction manager, and you always hear it referred to as a CM, as a construction manager. Economy of scale, timing, the project delivery to reduce potential cost. So, again, right now, you'll see in the schedule, we'll be talking about today, we're looking at the possibility of putting these bids out in January of 2020, trying to hit a time when contractors looking for work to get the best bids for the county. Kind of CM might get on board and say, you know what, if we do the foundation work in the fall, if we order long lead time items early, we can help expedite it and save some money. So, while the schedule we're showing shows it traditional, when you bring the CM on board, they might see some efficiency in time and potentially some cost savings. Cost is fixed. A CM, like I said, they don't give a percentage for what they would charge, which ultimately works out to a certain number, you know, for the project. We're doing one in southern Minnesota right now, eighteen million dollar construction project. This is just for general kind of understanding, and I think their CM fee was about a million dollars, but again, that's part of the general construction dollars. It wasn't add-on to it, it'd be part of the overall budget. They don't mark up for change orders. Thing that I love about a good CM is they're actually with us, lighting, to say, no, Mr. subcontractor, that's in your documents, that's your responsibility. So, they actually are there to help with that as well. Again, additional support to the client, they're your additional set of eyes, they're your additional consultant, they don't work for us, they actually work for the county. And the constructability review of costs, estimating. When the bids come in, what each CM will do is the CM will take those thirty-two bid packages, they'll do who the apparent low was of each of the bid categories, and they'll do all the qualifications. They'll check, did you have thirty-two windows in your bid? You know, they'll sit there and they're micro-analyzed with each one of the potential bidders to make sure they have everything covered because the last thing they wanna do is say, okay, Joe, you get this drywall bid, oh, you missed all those rooms. And then you have to deal with some kind of contention after the fact. So, a good CM will go out and qualify all those bids before they bring them to the board and say, here's the summary for the board. The typical, the way we present it to the board, the way I've worked with a lot of CMs is they'll put together a spreadsheet that says, here's the number of bids we got, here were the low bids, here's what we're recommending for the board. The biggest, so the two construction manager approaches, and I'm doing this based on my experience, a lot more than reading off the slides, to tell you the truth, I'm better at non-scripted type approaches. But, so the agency and at-risk approach, so the agency, I'll be honest, has no liability. Construction manager as an agent is your representative, they are helping to advise and do all the things construction management does, but if something does go south, they have no actual skin in the game to some extent. Some will say it's big, some will, you know, construction manager at risk might say it's a bigger issue. Construction manager, and so when the contracts are executed, so if you have thirty-two bid packages, those thirty-two bid packages are, each contract is with the county direct. So, you'll have thirty-two bid packages, thirty-two contracts, and you'll actually be cutting thirty-two checks a month to those various subcontractors through the CM, they help with all that process. Construction manager at risk, they, at some point in the project, a lot of times at the end of the design development, will say, look, this is a thirteen million dollar project, we're gonna lock in, we'll have a budget here for potential change orders and contingencies, but we're locking in at that number, and I'm giving the county a guarantee that that's my guarantee next year. You pay a little bit of a premium for that. When you do a CM at risk, that CM holds all the contracts. So, they have to be a big enough construction manager to be able to bond for the entire project. They hold all the contracts, so in essence, at the end of each month, you cut that construction manager a check, he then releases funds to all the various subcontractors. There's pros and cons to it, we've done both. We just finished a forty-five million dollar city halls expansion with a CM at risk. We've got three or four projects under construction right now that are CM agents. They both work, and I wouldn't say one's better than the other. Again, I've seen a little bit of a premium paid for a CM at risk, but I think both have worked. And at the end of the day, it's all about the individuals you get. We did have a city hall project a couple of years ago where there was a CM that had a decent reputation, but their field people weren't that good on staying on top of issues with contractors and subs. So, we had issues. We have other CMs that are just phenomenal. So, again, you'll have that opportunity, you'll have that opportunity to look at their credentials, meet their people, because we always, we always stress that their project manager and their site superintendent are critical, that they have experience, that they work together, that they know what they're doing, you know, and so we have that. So, I think that's where it is. And we, you know, I think there's a reason we're seeing the kind of CM approach happening more and more nationally because I think it does provide the best value to the clients, provides the best oversight on the project, and at the end of the day, hopefully, you've got the best control and least confrontational issues. It is a good team approach. So, I think that's part of the discussion, and I'm here to answer any questions that commissioners all have on this approach. Oh, yeah, from a timing standpoint too, I should say to commissioner that right now where we are is again, we've kind of finished detailing the schematic design, we're gonna be moving into design development, construction documents. So, we would anticipate that based on the commissioner's direction, some of the next steps would be to assist the county in issuing an RFP for CM services, if that's the way you go. We've done that on numerous projects, we coordinate that, make sure it has the proper requirements required for Brooklyn County and this project, and then bring back those proposals at some point in time. So, it's roughly probably a two-month process.
What we'll be looking at, and forget the RFP out, I don't know how many proposals we'll get back, but we would have you qualify the proposals within less of the RFP, and then we would narrow that down at the commission level, and then at some point in time, a number of three, four, five, whatever the number is, to do interviews of that RFP and make a selection. And then at that point, we need to enter into a contract based on that RFP. When we did this building here, a lot of things, when we did that qualification and narrowed it down to the interview process, we also kind of negotiated the fee, so to speak, as a percentage of the project. And we found that that really saved us some money on the fee between the different proposals we had back. That's the contract negotiation point, this is what they'll do it for, but you still have the ability to negotiate that, and if they don't like it, you go back, what other one can we talk to?
Exactly.
You can reject all of them if all their RFPs are high, and you can select one if they're high and negotiate. And that's what we did on this building.
You could. Typically, the negotiation point is questionable to me sometimes because should you negotiate with two, should you negotiate with all?
We just negotiated with the one. And it was not a large deal, it was a quarter of the percent.
Yeah. And the other thing I like to do too, that we've learned over time, is you've got to make sure the RFP calls for all of their conditions. Sometimes, construction management, for your last for a percentage of construction, and they won't identify all of their, what's considered their general condition costs, and their general condition costs are staff in a trailer. I've got one project right now, I've got, what is it? It's about a forty million dollar courthouse. It's a big court facility, non-courting facility. They've got one superintendent in the trailer, it's a very good CM, they run a lean crew. They're very good, they know what they're doing. I got another one, a judicial facility, which is courts and jail, it's under construction right now, but again, a very good CM, they've got five people in their trailer. So, if you don't ask those questions upfront about their staffing and their staffing costs and their general conditions, what will happen is they'll come back and say, oh, yeah, it's good. And then during the estimating phase, you'll see your general condition, like, oh, yeah. So, literally, one of these CMs is about five thousand dollars a month for staffing and opening. The other is twenty thousand dollars a month.
Exactly. So, that was a negotiable feature that we talked about because we paid for housing, and when they had a trailer on site and one supervisor on site, but we paid his transportation costs from where he lived back to here, the weekends he went on, it wasn't, it was a budget amount if I recall, and he selected one, he wanted to use it, but we also had that expense of an automobile and his housing while he was here. So, those are the types of things, and we really didn't discuss those until we got down the actual contract. So, you know, there's sort of, as you said, they're there in fees, but what is it actually used for?
To make sure it's all transparent what it is. And the other thing on this project, you know, experience in a detention facility is critical. You know, when you have block walls and making sure that every electrical component that controls doors and the cameras and everything else is within those block walls, coordinating that with management, understanding what the nuances are of these types of facilities is critical because a general contractor that's never done a jail or a construction manager that's never done a jail, you know, it's like anything, anybody that's never done something before, you're a little bit at their weakness in their learning process of trying to do the project, and that can be risky. So, as a matter of fact, we got a project underway in Michigan right now where we went through the CM selection process, we very specifically made it. We tried to have three, CMs have at least three recent, last ten years jail projects, a couple of them didn't as much, but we still evaluated their credentials.
I don't want to, again, I keep referring back to this building because I've had experience with this. When we went off RFPs, we had actually some RFPs submitted by firms that had never participated in a CM process, or basically general contractors, who all said that they could do it. And we kind of narrowed that down, and they all didn't make the final cut, but at that time, there were a lot of them that had never done a project. Now, six, seven years later, there's probably several around the area that have done projects. We need to look at local in addition to out of state, but again, we have to, I think, we have to keep an eye to experience levels built in this type of facility. So, again, it's our decision which way we wanna work, at risk or agent or general contractor.
Brian, what was this built at risk or agency?
One question I had between the two, that's on page, project delivery options, one, two, it's actually right up there right now, the bottom part, it says the main difference is the owner holds the trade contracts, or the at-risk holds the trade contracts. What about then, how does that affect where the owner liability in the event of a prime trade contractor damages another, a trade goes out of business, who has that responsibility then, at risk or an agency, which, does it transfer, or is it still?
So, there'd be performance on its own project, and if a contractor does go out of business or something like that, you go after their performance on, does that, to pay for any offsetting cost to bring in another contractor to it? That would be, that would be the case when either an agent or at-risk.
Okay. I just, I didn't know who was down the road after it's built and something happens, like for example, we've had some issues with this building, and who's responsible since we did agency? I'm assuming the city, county are responsible, but if you do at-risk, does that risk then transfer to that CM?
So, no, not, not once the project's done, once the project's complete, with any project, typically have like a one-year warranty period that covers everything pretty much?
Right.
And then there's certain things, mechanical systems, roofing systems, there's certain things that will have extended warranties. What we do in, whether it's general contractor or CM, you'll have the names of various subcontractors that did the work. So, typically, your facilities folks or whatever, and we help out in many cases too, because I think our clients help two, three years later to make sure they know who to contact, you'll have a list of their various contacts of who to call for those different items. The GCs and CMs, to some extent, unless they're a very good CM, typically are, once that project's done and that one-year warranty period's done, they're often done, it's then subcontractor. If a subcontractor, say you have an electrical contractor that did your lighting and stuff, and something goes wrong and they're out of business, I hate to say it, but there's not a lot of recourse at that point, and you just have to find another electrical contractor to help you fix it.
And the only reason I said it, just said the trade contracts are with the owner and the trade contracts are with the CM. And if, are we gonna be able to get somebody back here if we take the at-risk option, something goes wrong and says, well, my contract wasn't with the county, it was with contract manager, so I'm not, I'm not coming back or something like that?
No, 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 that typically doesn't happen, but the at-risk approach where the contractor held by the CM, sometimes CMs feel like they have better control of their subs because they're holding, they're holding the first chance. You know, hey, look, you need to be here, you need to pour that concrete when you're said you're gonna be in. Not that that comes to be a big issue, because again, most CMs we see have that ability because the reality is they're working with a lot of different subs all the time on the site. I don't see that as an issue, but I've heard from some CMs that do CM at risk, we hold a contract, we have a little bit more control of ourselves, and that's probably the truth.
Will bids from the subcontractors be comparable with the at-risk or they will?
What you'll do, what you should do. So, and the reason I smile and chuckle a little bit about that is because sometimes, sometimes CMs self-perform work, and we had a CM that self-performed work, and that's up to the county to decide whether they can self-perform or not. That's a discussion because sometimes a little bit of conflict. The reason I chuckle, Commissioner, when you ask that, is we specifically had one project that the CM self-performed masonry, and I don't know if it just, what particularly happened on that bid date, but we only had one bid on masonry, and that was the CM. So, I do get, I'm not real keen on, you will get competitive bidding on it, if you don't allow the CM to self-perform work, sometimes that helps to make sure you have a little bit. And again, I'm not, I'm not perspiring anybody's honesty in it, I just think sometimes there's things that happen behind scenes, this is a negotiation with the folks that know each other, where I'd rather keep it as one board as possible and tell the CM, you know what, you can't self-perform, you gotta self-perform. And then that way, we can make sure we get outside bids.
What's that particular incident, say, at risk or is it an agent that you just talked about?
It was an at-risk.
At-risk.
An at-risk hospital at risk, I understand. I think probably a lot of hospital medicals do, because again, they lock it in. The benefit to it is, like, the benefit is, once you establish that guaranteed maximum price and GMP, that has a contingency in there, and you track with the CM where it is, but there, unless, unless you come back and say, you know what, we're adding entirely a new wing, unless it's some really big scope change, the price should be fixed, so you should never have to say, oh, we're gonna have to allocate more money to this. They will, like I said, charge a premium for it, but I think there's a, there is a management aspect of it that's a little bit more efficient, I think, for a client with a CM at risk.
Is that premium, is that a percentage?
No, you don't see it, you don't see it. It's a, you know, I don't know how to compare it, you know, whether it's a hundred thousand, whether it's a couple hundred thousand, typically, there's just a little bit of premium. And there's actually less, the bigger the project, the bigger the CM has to be to be able to bond it, because ultimately, they're the one bonding for the project versus the subs. So, the bigger the project, the less CMs are out there to actually bond for. A project like this, you know, I know of at least three off the top of my head that could do it.
And did you say that what the CM is paid is usually a percentage of overall project cost?
Yeah.
And what is the range on that commission?
Commissioner, yeah. I forgot. Every time I spit out a number, I get in trouble, so I'm gonna be careful. It seems, it seems to me they're in the three and a half to five and a half percent range, that seems to be the numbers that stick in my head, but again, the caveat with that is that three and a half to five percent might not include their staffing costs in the trailer to manage the project, and that's why it's important to understand and have them identify a general bid. We just, we just, they just selected, we're working with the city of Rochester on a new police station, and literally just selected a CM probably from the last one. And we had them provide, when the CMs did it, supposedly we helped the city issue, made sure that the CMs identified all of their costs. And, I mean, and as a comparison, Commissioner, that's what I was saying was roughly about an eighteen million, eighteen point five million dollar project, the CM fees to manage the project and for them to do it was a million dollars of that eighteen million. So...
Does the percentage include the soft costs?
Yes. Oh, no, so there's, so soft costs in the estimate I provided to you are separate from the construction costs. Soft costs are architectural engineering fees, soil borings, survey, and the biggest one or another one there is FMNE or furniture fixtures and equipment. The number we have right now in soft, and just since you asked that initial question, the soft cost, the number's an estimate, we do need to work with the county to nail that down. We typically look at soft cost anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent of a project cost when we're doing the initial planning, but you need to work it out because the architectural fees are in there. We got one county right now that I've actually got this long-running spreadsheet because they've got, you know, all kinds of miscellaneous things up. Not only appliances are separate, because, you know, when you think about it, if you purchase and have, you go to a local appliance company and you got the refrigerator and the microwave or whatever, you're gonna have a local guy put it, they're not gonna charge you taxes because you're a tax-tempted organization, and they're gonna put it in for you. If you go through like a general contractor, they're gonna charge a markup on those appliances and then give them to you. So, typically, anything the county can purchase... thousand, whether it's a couple hundred thousand, typically there's just a little bit of premium. And there's actually less, the bigger the project, the bigger the CM has to be to be able to bond it, because ultimately, they're the one bonding for the project versus the subs. So the, so the bigger the project, the less CMs are, are out there to actually bond for. A project like this, I, you know, I, I know of at least three off the top of my head that could do it.
And did you say that what the CM is paid is usually a percentage of overall project cost?
Yeah.
And what is the range on that, Commissioner?
Commissioner, yeah. I forgot. Every time I, every time I spit out a number, I get in trouble. It seems, it seems to me they're in the three and a half to five and a half percent range, that seems to be the numbers that stick in my head. But again, the caveat with that is that three and a half to five percent might not include their staffing costs and the trailer to manage the project, and that's why it's important to understand and have them identify a general, general bid. We just, we just, they just selected, we're working with the City of Rochester on a new police station, and literally just selected a CM probably from the last one. And we had them provide, when the CMs did it, supposedly we helped the city issue, made sure that the CMs identified all of their costs. And, and as a comparison, Commissioner, that's what I was saying, was roughly about an eighteen million, eighteen point five million dollar project, the CM fees to manage the project and for them to do it was a million dollars of that eighteen million. So.
Does the percentage include the soft cost?
Yes. Oh, no, so there's, so soft cost in the estimate I provided to you are separate from the construction costs. Soft costs are architectural engineering fees, soil borings, survey, and the biggest one or another one there is FMNE, or furniture fixtures and equipment. The number we have right now in soft, and just since you asked that initial question, the soft cost, the number's an estimate, we do need to work with the county to nail that down. We typically look at soft cost anywhere from fifteen to twenty percent of a project cost when we're doing the initial planning, but you need to work it out, because the architectural fees are in there. We've got one county right now, because I've actually got this long-running spreadsheet, because they've got, you know, all kinds of miscellaneous things up. Not only appliances are separate, because, you know, when you think about it, if you purchase and have, you go to a local appliance company and you get the refrigerator and the microwave or whatever, you're going to have a local guy put it, they're not going to charge you taxes because you're a tax-tempted organization, and they're going to put it in for you. If you go through like a general contractor, they're going to charge a markup on those appliances and then give them to you. So typically, anything the county can purchase and do separately without incurring additional markup, which the other company managing it, we pull those out and put those in soft cost. So like the furniture or the appliances.
But the soft cost, the, the CM does not get a percentage of that?
No. Their percentage is based on, on the construction cost.
And their percentage is included in the construction cost, or is that included in soft cost?
Their, it's included in construction cost. Except for their, what they call pre-construction services. So they'll give a proposal, we'll ask them for, a proposal for pre-construction services. Again, for comparison, not that it's apples to apples, because you can never tell in numbers and types of projects and so forth. But again, that police station I mentioned, that was eighteen five, the pre-construction services were seventeen thousand. So again, that thirty to fifty thousand for pre-construction services is pretty much a ballpark for a lot of projects.
Sample I could show, I don't know if it was CM or at-risk or agent, but it was basically the same thing. Trailer on-site, manager on-site, you pay per copy, if it comes out of the copier, you paid for, you know, I mean, you paid for all office supplies, you paid for the grill they put outside to do hot dogs once in a while for the contractors that came around, you paid for a picnic table, you paid for ATV to run around the construction site, and at the end of it, that was theirs. These are the types of things you have to look at to be sure they're not included in those, those management fees. Like I said, we paid for apartment, narrowing and so forth, it was part of those fees. There can be additional things that you get hidden, so to speak, in operational fees.
And that's why we, and, you know, I think, I think we've gotten definitely smarter as we've gone over the years, and we, we know how to address those to make sure there's no surprises for you.
A particular case, the owner didn't end up with the grill or the ATV or the picnic tables. You know, what's the, yeah, what were we talking about?
Hey, Bruce?
This, sir.
Had Water Tug made a decision on their deliveries?
So when we did the courthouse remodeling, which just got finished, sometimes very small projects, and when I say small projects, really anything in my mind, three, four million dollars or less sometimes, are what I would consider kind of a small project. And a lot of times, general contractors for those work very well. The courthouse remodeling, and I forgot what our budget was off the top of my head, but it was a fairly small project, and we did that through a general contractor. The other thing that I want to say that helps for a CM too, is, is when you have phased projects, sometimes I feel like I get better coordination in working with a CM for phasing, and right now, your project is build new, move inmates, move operations, remodel existing, you know, so there's some phase there. I think that does work better. One caveat between, another one between CM and general contractor, that you have to be careful. One of the things, one of the advantages with a general contractor that I should add to my little bullet list, is you put a set of documents together, you give it to that general contractor, they bid on it, and as you go through that project, you say, hey, Mr. Contractor, it's in those documents. The way a construction manager operates is they put together what's considered bid packages. So when we issued a bid, there'll be a sheet of the bid information that says mechanicals responsible, or ABC, electricals are responsible for CD and X. And it defines who's responsible for everything. Good coordination between the CM and the architectural team, design team, make sure that nothing is missed. That's, that is, that can happen at times. You, you know, you find, as a matter of fact, we had a project recently where I think temperature controls and who was going to provide the connection for the temperature controls was a little fuzzy in there, so of course, they use that as an opportunity to give you that. You have to make sure that at the end of the day, they're stitched together well. They're probably providing more information on some issue than you want to know, but it's just weird, we have a lot of it.
I know on this building, there's an example of that, is bid packages were put together, and the drives were put together, and the chemicals were done by one and electrical by another. It came to construction time, they were both in the same space, and it wasn't going to work. So it ended up being a little, whose fault was this, who's going to pay to change this? And, you know, the CM at that time took care of it, it wasn't an additional cost to us. Everybody pointed fingers, but it got taken care of in about two days, so the work continued. Those are the types of things I'm concerned about. Even in a stepped process, where we're going to do the remodel first, or do the addition first, and the remodel second, some of those things have to tie together, electrical issues, so I want to make sure that a CM that we use or whatever has experience in those types of phased projects. And I think those are some of the things we're going to look at as we look at qualifications. Probably, sorry, probably do a delivery assistant.
Bruce, has Carrington decided which they're going to use for their big projects?
That, you know, as bad as they need to do a facility, they, Carrington County, which is a very, very separate kind of animal to some extent, has, had, went out and decided to do a referendum at the very start. And so their county board is stuck in a situation where they, where they're trying to go with the referendum. The last go-around, it was very, very close, but, you know, they're trying to find other means to actually pay for it. You know, anyway, it's a whole different process. But they, I'm still talking to the county, they need to do something, because they just don't have the space, and they, they don't know what to do.
They haven't moved in to decide what kind of a contractor they're even going to use yet?
No. They, they need to get everything else off the top of their head, so. But their courts, that, this was the first step in there, because like you, they have a building fund, it's like Brookings County, they have a building fund, and they needed to do some initial court security for this first step of sports.
Any other comments or questions from anybody?
I would say that in my experience, you're, kind of back to Leanne's question about what's the premium? In a CM at-risk scenario, the premium you pay is directly proportionate to their level of risk. So the tighter the drawings, the tighter the specifications, the better the team, and the better they function together, the less risk that construction manager at-risk incurs, and the more likely they're willing to reduce their margin and, and take on more of that. The more open-ended things are, the more risk they're on the hook for, and their premium goes up.
That is a good point. Because we, and we've heard of some documents that have been done based on kind of more basis of design and intent and not detailed. We don't, we don't do those for these types of projects, but you're absolutely right.
Angie, I'm curious, what's your thoughts on, on free processes?
There is no way I would do a general contractor on a project of this nature, not a chance. And I would, I would personally shy away from even a CM agent in our case. I think we've got a lot of really great CM at-risk opportunities in this region, and probably within, you know, three, four hours of where we exist. And a lot of that good experience comes with really great coordination efforts. Now, I'm not a believer in preventing a CM at-risk from bidding on a bid package. I have seen really great RFPs that specifically articulate that the, the CM at-risk is only eligible to bid on projects where multiple bids occur. You can basically forbid, if they're the only one proposing on a bid package, you can say, we're not taking it, it's going back out, and we want at least three. There's no chance we're awarding it on just one. The thing that I like about CM at-risk, especially if they're relatively local, is they know exactly who the good performers are, they know which businesses are sketchy and have just changed their name sixteen times in the last twenty years, because that happens, and it happens on, in particular, low bid award projects. And so your construction manager at-risk has the ability to say, even though this person has the low bid, trust me, they are not qualified to do this job, and we would refuse to work with them based on these qualification requirements. So those, those local insights really help provide some of that. Plus, the single source point of contact in a lot of cases is really advantageous for a county where, let's just say, some, something goes horribly wrong, and there are lawsuits involved at the end, rather than multiple parties and subcontractors all having direct prime contracts with us, we have one contract, and if there's an issue, that's one point of contention, and it's their job then to subjugate that back to their subcontractors. It's a lot less messy and a lot less management issues on our part.
Who's responsible for soliciting bids from subcontractors that they at-risk? Do they do that, or?
Typically, that, those bid packages will be on all of your public exchanges and databases, so the Sioux Falls Builders Exchange, the Twin Cities Builders Exchange, like all of those types of things, the big packages themselves are clearly articulated in all, on all of those, so everybody, everybody sees it.
I mean, at-risk, he doesn't just go, I got three guys on the bid.
No, no. And it's funny, they always do these diagrams like this that show level of involvement of each of the various, you know, at the start of the design project, the architectural team is very, very high, and then as you move into the construction phase, the responsibilities are very, very high on the CM side. And what we do is, all right, it's our, whether it's CM or at-risk or agent, it's still our responsibility to support getting the bid documents out to the public, putting them on Builders Exchange, putting them on the county website. You know, we've actually typed, if you go CM, I'm going to give you a list of, of a bunch of CMs anyway, and get whatever list of CMs you have locally, and we'll make calls to those people, because we want to make sure they're aware of it. So we like to at least kind of inform them, and then a lot of times, they'll contact subcontractors as well. And again, you know, it's one of the, it's one of the toughest things in jail these days is, is detention equipment contractors and security electronic contractors, there's not a lot of them out there. And they, they tend to be, there's one out of Missouri, probably one of the best in the country, and we've got them on three or four projects right now. And they're the toughest ones, because they're not, you're not going to find a security, one of the better security electronic, electronic companies is out of Ripon, Wisconsin. Again, you want to do fair bidding competition, we'll do all of that as well. But, you know, and then at the end of the day, it's specifying the equipment you have, so it's not proprietary, and you can get some service contracts, especially for cameras and door controls and those kinds of things, a detention stand.
With the at-risk, we don't select the bid. It's all done through the at-risk. In other words, if we've got three bids for putting in fire extinguishers, I'll just pick that. That doesn't come to us.
Yeah, well.
It will come to us, even at-risk.
Yep. So what will happen is, it's, it's a bidding process just like the general contractor, where, okay, this Thursday at two o'clock, all bids need to be in, and so on and so forth, and it can be a lot of fun actually, because, you know, this one CM is, so you'll have bid packages, you have to pack one, two, three, you know, one's concrete, one's landscape, whatever. And they'll sit there in a room like this, filled up, and it's an open bid, and we allow all the subs to be there, and what you do is the sub organizes, or the CM organizes them in the various bid packages. So you read each one, they record each one, and for a general contractor, you might have six, seven, eight bids or whatever, and you read bids, you check their bid bond, check the addendums, you know, you're done in thirty, forty minutes. CM process is half a day, I'll just tell you this right now, because, because if you have, say you have thirty-two bid packages, or thirty bid, and let's assume you've got a very good bidding environment, and you get five bid packages on each one of it, you're going to have a hundred and fifty envoys to potentially open. So it takes some time, but you get some very good bidding. But yeah, we, we would do the same process, whether it's CM or at-risk or CM agent, still do that same process.
Same process.
So then, then to further answer your question, Commissioner, you get all the numbers, they record it in a spreadsheet as they're going, they go back and qualify, and then they, we and that CM then present, present to the commissioners, we got these five bids, we qualified them, we've gone through it, this is the low that we would recommend, so they'll come to the commissioner with, here's our recommendation for a.
What we did on this building again, was those came in, the bids were open with us present, and we kind of left and let the CM go through and start doing the qualification, because like you said, it takes some time. We kind of came back later and said, I, this one did, here's the five that did, there's, here's our recommendation, but you have to take, and then, even at-risk, the little bid, this is a government building, we have to take a little bit. So we have to be very careful that, that the little bid qualifies in every aspect of what we wanted.
The CM won't do that.
And, and. That's the help we need, I don't care if it's at-risk or agent, we need to make sure that we're fair in all, all aspects.
So I will tell you though, Mike, in, in my experience, there are occasions where the low bid is not actually a qualifying bid.
Right.
Because, for example, I've done a project where an elevator bid came in, I think this building had a similar issue, where an elevator bid came in twenty thousand dollars low, and the construction manager went back and said, are you sure you got this approved as a substitution? And they were like, oh, no, I didn't. Oh, it doesn't actually meet the specification. So that's a disqualified bid, and you go to the next one.
Well, specifically this building, I remember well, the bid was several thousands of dollars less than the other competing bids, and we had the, CM go back and make sure the specifications were met, because it was such a huge difference in cost. And, and to my, it did meet all our bid specifications, it met everything to the T, and it was a little bid and we had to accept it. I still don't like the elevators here.
Sure.
But we had to take the little bid, and all the specs, but we did ask them to go back, make sure that's right.
Yep.
And, and it was. So that's a problem we have with government buildings, is you, you know, you want to make sure it's qualified, but you have to take a little of those.
The other, the other.
The taxpayers' money.
The other issue though, is that your low bidder, when you go back to him and say, are you sure you didn't miss something, they might go, oh shit, yes, I did miss something. And, please disqualify my bid. That also happens, because what you don't want is someone who bid a hundred thousand dollars under because they missed something, and then they're pissed every single day that they're on that job site, and they're going to do crappy work.
They're looking for every opportunity they can to make it up.
Absolutely.
Exactly. It's part of that risk that I'm worried about sometimes, they're looking to make it up somewhere. It's into their profit margin. But, you know, that said, if they're a good firm, we shouldn't have those issues. I've seen issues where on a particular bid, and I don't know what form it was under, but the guy that bid for something was a one-man firm that didn't represent it at that, it wasn't checked out, and obviously, they made it forfeit his bond because he couldn't complete the project, couldn't come back. So they got the bond back, but then when they went up for, at that time, I need it done tomorrow, this guy didn't show up, and didn't show up, didn't show up, it cost a heck of a lot more money to get it accomplished, to pick somebody up locally. So, you know, that qualification of those bids is extremely important. Even the qualifications of the people doing the bid, not necessarily to meet the specifications, but what, what are their qualifications on projects they've done in the past, and I want to make sure that, you know, these guys knew that, and our CM knows that as we go through the bid process, because this was a learning process for me here. Buildings had problems, and this and all, you know, I agree with building and several buildings have problems, that four, five, six years down the road, and every one gets off, and we certainly have some here too. But they're not structural issues, a building's going to fall down or anything like that. It's a creepy elevator, makes jumps and stops, it's performing because, for Mike, or it's not for Mike, as you pointed out, it's actually living here, it's crap, maybe issues, we have humidity issues, and we can't see this all. So, you know, I'm going to be a lot more cautious on this one, as we look at those qualifications than I was on this one, because I obviously didn't know it better, so to speak, I learned. As far as us trying to come to an agreement, which the delivery system, construction management is, I agree with general contractor, I don't, construction management, I certainly want to do, whether it's at-risk or agent, is a regular decision, at-risk or agent. I'm hearing you say you like at-risk.
I, well, I do, just because my background is, I, I know how to hold their feet to the fire a little bit differently than a typical owner probably would.
Well, and I, to be honest with you, I look for your expertise to help us along the process, not that, you have to, no, you're kind of a commissioner. But you have, you have.
We'll, we'll obviously tap.
Comments, Ryan? Yeah, just, just a manager, and then I'm leaning towards at-risk, but, you know, just I want to, I wouldn't mind talking to the hospital, see how their at-risk went, things that they ended up afterwards, if they had any additional costs and fees, I think they did, but.
Outside the at-risk agree price?
I think so, but I think there were changes that had to be made, that they found out afterwards that weren't anybody's fault, you know, type of thing. And I, that's why I said, I don't want to say for sure that that's there, I'd like to talk with that, because that building committee that was involved in that, and also Jason, just see what his recommendation would be, having, have gone through that process. So.
I would say that management here by agent and assets kept us on track, and we were on time with delivery, so to speak, as far as the end of the project, it wasn't six months delayed or anything. You know, it worked out okay. We had some obvious delays with some things, obviously. Steel was, I think, one of them. Those are things outside your control, dealing with steel, and they probably are right now, too. Larry?
I'm leaning towards at risk also. Like Bruce said, though, we need to look at staff they will have on site, you know, and whatever form we use to encourage local contractors to participate, so.
Did the same on this building. Leon?
I like that risk, and I'm interested here what the hospital has to say. But I like the fact that we will know how much we're going to spend, and then we can plan for that. And that'll be huge for us.
So I'm hearing that at risk is probably the way we're gonna go. We need to probably have a consensus by the next meeting in order for us to, the next thing we're gonna go to here is scheduling, where we're gonna go. So we're gonna need to have some consensus. If you wanna take time or I had to check into that, that's fine. I think we can put it on our agenda for the next meeting, on the 12th.
March 12.
March 12th to make a selection of the process. It doesn't need to say, we have votes, it's just consensus. We have to vote when we have the contract, obviously. But I wanna get him started on the RFP, or construction manager.
Commissioner, I would like to get you, and especially get your input as well, get you that draft, RFP, make sure you all had a chance to look through it, make sure it covers all the things you would cover.
Are you, are you interested in having him prepare an at-risk draft, so we know what it looks like for an RFP?
I think that makes sense.
It makes sense to you? Everybody? All right. Well, at least we'll get a draft from an RFP process to the at-risk, if we find out. Ryan, if we wanna.
Well, and I don't think they're gonna, they'll probably give us some ideas of what to look out for.
Okay.
My understanding, and again, just from being at the board meeting, as an executive show, not involved in any of the building committees or anything like that, just as an executive member at the board meetings, that if they had to choose again, that they would probably use at risk again. So I think they'd like it, and that's that they would choose, and they obviously had the same options we have, and that they would go with that again. But I want to talk with them and say, okay, these are the things, they had some issues with, just like you guys have brought up, different things. They, they, real-time, recent build of a facility that is much more complex, similar to what we're in the building, like you said, jails, not just building an office building, they built a medical facility, a surgery rooms, and stuff like that.
I think SDSU and Office of State Engineer all tend towards CM at risk for a lot of their projects over about $5 million as well. And so, I mean, it's tried and true in this community, and there are a lot of entities that we could certainly talk to about it.
The other thing I like about at-risk is, agent on this building in particular, as you had mentioned, all the bills were paid by us. So we had to set up a separate accounting system to do that. And the bills came from the CM agent, and it's ready to verify, go ahead and pay it. But it was still a process that involved extra staff time on our part that hasn't expanded. So at risk, we just get the one bill, and we're ready to check that the at-risk agent number done with it. Now, I'm comfortable with that. The other gives, there was never a rejection of a bill that came across, let's put it that way.
And I just remembered, we had an issue in Minnesota. Part of the reason they went at risk is it had to do with whether or not, I think, a city municipality could actually do a guaranteed max project at GMP. I think the only way the state law allowed for is if it was a GM, CM at risk. There was some law issues with that.
Mr. Ramor, we'll have him bring us an RFP proposal at the at-risk at the 12th meeting, so we can approve that RFP. And we will look at probably, what's it take, about a month to get the RFPs back yet?
Yeah, from when the commission approves that, we'll issue it, months should be more than adequate to get the proposals, get them in, put them together. I would say probably by the beginning of May.
Excuse me.
Yeah, so we do that in March, yeah, by the year, in March.
We can get them back.
In April, and then.
Be in April to renew the RFPs, and then first meeting in May, we'll have the contract, if everything looks okay.
Well, you probably have some interviews.
Well, maybe the first meeting in May is a very good process.
That's what might be.
We'd narrow it down at the April 23rd meeting, if they're in already. We'd narrow it down to the three that we wanted to interview, and then we'd do interviews in. So by the first meeting in May, we'll start with contracts.
I have a question on how firm our budget needs to be for the building before we enter into an agreement that we're gonna pay somebody a certain percentage of that. Is there an inner relationship between how those two things come? We're still, the costs on the budget are still pretty.
Yeah, we're gonna go into scheduled cost estimates based on current time, time to, and then we can talk about that.
You can do it a couple different ways. And Bruce mentioned that idea that your pre-construction services come at one fee, and so you're not necessarily, you're enlisting their services, but you're not finalized on their final fee and contract on the second phase until they actually see documents in some cases. So you're signing a pre-construction services contract on the front end. And then once they have documents, then it's a full contract.
I will tell you, we need to, during the 11:30, because a couple commissioners have another meeting that they need to attend, and then they get, they give them some.
Go ahead, Bruce. So my nervousness comes when we hired them, when we initially hired the CM, I'll tell you, because a lot of times, early on, I do these preliminary budgets. I'm always a little nervous, okay, where we appropriate our historic information, or are we going with the cost center, are we aware of what the current costs are? The CM's first responsibility when they, when they come aboard, not only to get the understanding of the land, land, what the goals and objectives are, but also to look at this estimate, and say, are we on track? This estimate should be conservative, in my opinion. We've allowed for some of these unknowns and its variables, so I'm comfortable that we've got contingencies allocated. I always joke about I have a love-hate relationship with estimators, because no estimator wants the project coming out of the budget. And they're always gonna have some level of safety in their bids. A good estimator is gonna be anywhere from 3% to 6%. A real conservative estimator is gonna be 10% to 15%. We had one project recently, a $40 million project, did $10 million under budget. Well, to me, that CM was covering their tail. So luckily, the client didn't sacrifice anything. We did a jail years ago, had the same kind of CM agent approach. They came in during the design phase, it was a, I think it was a $12 million construction budget. They came in during the design phase and said, it was $2 million over. We shrunk some stuff down, we changed the materials, we reduced it. Sure enough, on the day, it was $2 million under, the sheriff was on that, because he had already given up certain things that they thought weren't gonna be there. So, anyway, we'll, commission will be working closely with the CM, and they'll confirm it, and, you know, we're off, we admit to it. But at the end of the day, they help directly. And while they're not guaranteeing it, we are using their expertise in it. And that's, again, that helps where, even if they haven't had a lot of jail work, they're still gonna be talking to detention equipment contractors, and security collector, electronic contractors who do this kind of thing. So they'll help qualify those numbers, well before it goes out to bid.
Other stuff on the scheduled cost of, slide up, or anyone?
Yeah, so it's very similar to what we had before. We've applied some additional escalation, we've applied some additional adjustments. I mean, if you looked at where the numbers tracked from when we started in 2017 to where they are now, it's right in line with where we would expect it. There is a level, I wouldn't say excessive conservatism in the, you know, again, the soft cost number that we've identified here, $2 million. What we have, what we really have to do is, that's a number that we really need to sit down and say, okay, what are the things that need to be in that number? You know, it's a jail facility, typically when we, when you look at furniture fixture, and that equipment, that's FFNE, you, if there's an office there, if you have an interview space or whatever, you might have a conference table and some chairs, and some interview space, like if you're 24/7 or whatever, that was part of an FFNE package. What we could easily do is identify things that we would see, bought from a local furniture vendor, rather than through a CM, and we could identify those. It's probably not big. The bolt-down detention furniture, the things you have in your housing unit, that's typically part of the construction that detention equipment contractors price. So what I'm saying is, we need to go through that soft cost and qualify what's in that number. We know what the AEB is. The CM, their pre-construction service fee comes out of the soft cost, and not their overall, but their pre-construction. We mentioned appliance, so we need to qualify that. But I think all in all, where we are within the process, I think that the good, the big picture is construction, the project bids 2020, that's what this is set up on. And it allows all the various contingencies we planned. You know, the design and construction contingency, what happens as we move through the process is, once there's more qualified data, like at the end of the design development phase, the design contingency goes down, and you have a certain amount set for construction contingency, for the unknowns that might happen. I've said this to every county board, and every city council I've ever been met with in the world, there's no perfect set of documents. Architects do make mistakes, architects do make mistakes. So sometimes a contingency comes and says, we missed, sometimes it's things that you might wanna change to our construction. There is some well contingency. But I think all in all, it's a, it's a budget that I think is very realistic, Commissioner. If it came in $2 million over this, I would be absolutely mortified and shocked. So it's gonna be within this range.
To answer your question, Stacey's got some numbers here.
We have our bond amount for 7.4 million. We do have, over the years, the commission has set aside money in both the general fund and the building fund for this project. Right now, we have $4 million in the general fund set aside, designated or assigned for this project, and just under, just under 2.5 million in the building fund and the 301 fund. So we have about, just shy of 13.9 million set aside. That includes the bond.
And our bonding authority is at 7.4, correct?
So it appears we're okay, unless we see something drastic with the project bids. Any other questions on the schedule? The one thing I was looking at, you mentioned earlier, maybe getting footings in in the fall type situation, that will either define itself later as we go through selecting the process.
We're gonna move forward into the design and finalizing things like we talked about. And as you get the CM aboard, they might say, look, if we can execute this. Because in essence, what they're saying is, they might see a window of opportunity. They're moving things forward, so they're not, that inflation amount is not in there as much. So they potentially see a value of doing things quicker like that. Again, we had one project where that's exactly what the CM did, and we ended up, they ended up putting the foundations, precast walls, ordering steel, doing all those things prior to winter setting in. And so when, when, once the winter set in, and they had footings in and whatnot, they were actually able to build. By the time, you know, we've been hauling quite a bit, by the time we had next spring, they were already closed in. So you could accelerate the schedule.
Marty, do you have any comments on the scheduling?
No, and that's probably what you're gonna tell me, anyway, so. I imagine I just screw it all up, but, you know, I've always wondered if we could do the 24/7 addition prior to the 2020, just because that would help us alleviate congestion in the control room right now. And is that feasible?
It could be. It absolutely could be. Because the way that's laid out right now, you could, you could do some modifications to some of those areas, and try to do the 24/7 first. And that's, again, something, when it comes to the whole scheduling, we'd work with your sheriff and the whole group to make sure it's sequencing the way you want it to sequence.
It's efficient. It is. I think they have to be. It's your area, the expertise, not ours. You know your needs in that regard, as far as the 24/7 program, where it will be located in the facility. Any other questions on the scheduling aspect of the process?
So from a big picture, just let everyone know, the way this schedule is laid out here, I think I mentioned three hours in this slide, it's March to, it's March to July period is what we consider design development. So we have a very, very in-depth process. We'll talk to Scott and Sherrod and Marty to go through, you know, what type of security lock you wear, and you use where, what type of detention hardware, the types of epoxy flooring, the types of areas, mechanical systems, the, all the various components that go into it. Our goal, our goal during the design development process is, the more we go through with you and talk about everything that's gonna be in the project, the less surprises there are. The last thing I want, in my opinion, is a good architect, is something is built, and you say, I didn't know we were gonna do that, I didn't know we were gonna get that. To me, that means we're not doing our job. Because the last thing I want is to say something, I had this happen years and years ago, so I do wanna preface it, was when I was a much younger architect. We did a jail, and when I lived out in Nevada, we did a jail out in Nevada, and we had a room, property storage area, that held all this casework in there. And the sheriff comes in there after it was installed, and goes, what's that? He goes, it's casework for your, for your, for your storage room. He goes, I don't want that, I just want racks. And the contractor ripped it out. That was a sign that we didn't convey our design intent to that individual. It's our responsibility to make sure we walk through every room with you. How much glass should be in that door? Top of the house is top. You know, those things need to be discussed as well. So anyway, the design development phase, that's what we focus on, every little nuance. Again, once we finish it, we put the numbers together, come back to the commission, here's where it is, move into construction document phase, where it's really, we just finalize specifications, finalize documents, make sure everything's well-defined, and then it goes out to bid. So the construction document phase, like I mentioned, really, right now, we're showing that basically July to January period. The bid and award phase, roughly, takes about two months. You figure, how many public bids take four, has to be on the street for four weeks, you get it back, the evaluation, bring it back to commissioners, execute contracts. We always say about two months, public projects.
Any questions on that scheduling? Commissioner Horwitz, you've done a lot of this type of scheduling stuff, it's most realistic looking.
Okay.
An agreement, or not pushing it at any point, schedule.
And then, you know, when it comes to the construction period, we will ask, typically what we do in the RFP process for CMs, we ask them to give us an understanding and a possible schedule for this project. We'll share with what we have, but that is their opportunity to show they have some fast track after this as well. Because right now, we have roughly, I think, 19 to 22 months identified for construction of the project. You know, we want them to be engaged in it. Right on this schedule, you know, you're looking at really the end of 2021, when you're kind of moving into the new phase.
Thank you, Commissioner Horwitz. Additional elements?
No, I mean, I think in the, in the broad scheme of things, the construction phase seems like it makes sense. I mean, I don't know Bruce's staffing for the design phase, right? So that your team and how efficiently they can move through that, just depends on, in some cases, how quickly we can make decisions and kind of go forward. Most good CMs are going to say, your construction phase is either completely unrealistic, and they'll tell you that first thing out of their mouth, or they'll go, yeah, that's doable. The ones who don't say anything are the ones you should worry about.
No, I'm worried about it.
Yes.
I mean, so we'll see what they can do when it happens.
So one of my questions is, if the county is ever engaged in a project that incurred liquidated damages, or any of those types of things, for a completion date? Because if there's a specific cost to the county, especially the sheriff's department of being displaced during construction, often you will find that liquidated damages are a part of enforcing, this contract will be complete by this date. So I, I don't know, do you wanna talk about that at all?
Yeah, it's a good topic. So liquidated damages are basically putting an end date on the contract that has to be completed by this date. It's been challenged in court at times, just, what are the damages to the county, what are the damages? So sometimes it's been challenged, and if you had inmates out in the county, if there were some systems and operations that impacted you, that were causing you, you know, if you had to lease space, and you're leasing that space, and you're having to pay more for that leased space, there could be some damages that the county's occurring, are occurring. Sometimes Sometimes we've had liquidated damage projects just as a, as a hammer. Not that they were enforceable, not that we were necessarily even thinking about enforcing, but we're sticking four hundred dollars a day, five hundred dollars a day, just if. Now, it's not a bad thing to discuss, because the CM could also use that hammer as well, say, hook sub, you delayed this project, you don't help us to resolve this issue, liquidated damages on you. So you're absolutely right, it's, even if it doesn't get enforced, sometimes it's a uh-oh kind of thing. So I actually like the idea of putting it in there. The CM will tell you something too, whether they, what their feelings are about that. It's not a bad idea.
It could be a negotiated process with.
And is it an idea? Because what if something happened and you had to displace the inmates and they had to find another?
Right. If there's a direct cost to Brookings County and our tax base of a hundred and eighty dollars a day to move inmates to another facility, we should know what that is, and roughly how many people we would, on average, be displacing to know the, the direct cost of delays.
Huge.
Well, yeah, exactly.
It would be huge.
What do we want that in the RFP, liquidated damages? Red blind? I think that's something we discussed with the CM when we brought them on board. And you could say, we could say in the RFP too. In the RFP, I like to be as transparent as possible, put everything in there. We had one, again, it's one in Michigan, where we knew it was an extremely tight project. We told them very clearly in the RFP, this is a very tight budget, and we want the CM to understand that and be willing to, to address that with it. So it doesn't hurt to say that the county is looking at adding liquidated damages on its project, but unaddressed.
I think the other thing that it does is it forces them to take that construction schedule and be very serious about how they scrutinize and how they plan. So it's not just a, eh, it'll be about two weeks. It's, no, it'll actually take two full weeks, and we're going to provide for a certain amount of contingency so that we know it will be done by this date.
So they got some important part of the RFP. Very important.
It's a, it's a good planning tool for you all, so that you know, there's a drop dead date that you know you can be in it. And if we gain two weeks on the process, great.
Yeah, and you're just ahead of the game.
Yep.
And sometimes there's clients that do the characteristic kind of thing too, that if you finish early, you get a bonus. I see liquidated damages with the hammer going with the bonus, I know sometimes. Hospitals, however, some of those might actually, where they can get patients in the space, they might even have, you know, it's five hundred dollars a day if you, if you, if you don't finish on time, but it's three hundred dollars for every day you finish it prior to your schedule. So there's, there's that thing to you sometimes. Get it done ahead of schedule, hospital, they can make a lot more money, three hundred dollars in there, as a rule.
Any other on the scheduled portion of the papers? Next item I'd like to discuss is the sign information for the schedule. I requested this, to be able to put a sign up on the project with a completion date. And I asked Bruce, anybody do signs? What do we look like?
So this is a project we did, and typically, and you've seen this many, many projects. You know, a lot of times, it's a four-by-eight sign, it's temporary, we need to make sure whatever ordinances, local ordinances, it doesn't impact that at all. You know, this particular one had an image, I, my, my feeling was it probably would just say, Brookings County Detention Center Expansion Project, projected to start construction spring in 2020, and you just put it out there, I'm not even sure you put an image on the site, but anyway, that's up for you all to decide. But it's, it's an information thing that comes down the line, sometimes, sometimes a sign is not put up till the CM actually fences off the site, starts work, you can put it, it's not critical. It's, it's a, it's a thing that can be done when construction starts, it's however you want to handle it.
Do we want them to just present some options, or do we want to just design something ourselves? Do we want to not do it at all? Do we want to talk about on the twelve?
Make that decision on twelve.
On the twelve, okay.
It would, it would be nice for them, Stacy had an opportunity to reach out, make sure what our ordinance requirements are for signing.
I'll put that together.
You'll do that?
What I can do is I'll put together what the ordinances, requirements are, and potentially draft what a sign might look like, then that way you can all decide.
We'll move forward with that idea. Mr. Swerzman had talked about a visit of completed steel cell facilities. I'll let him leave that question.
So currently, the, the design is laid out based on steel cells, and you see some images. This particular company, and really the one that produces the best quality, is actually out of Georgia. It is a proprietary item, but it's a very, very efficient item. Now, there's a number of reasons why we're seeing steel cells used more and more than concrete block. First off, the, the metal panels, they're insulated metal panels, so they're two, they're two and a quarter inch thick panels, steel sheets, apparently gauges on the side, they're insulated. So there's a couple of things I like clients look at, first is to go and bang on them and make sure you're comfortable with them. You bang on a block wall, you know it's, you're not going to hear it, the less people are screaming, the less you're going to hear it. You know that the durability of that wall. I like people to see the steel cells and be comfortable, that, that's a good product, because we're not talking something that's going to last five years, or something that's going to last forty-five years, and we want to make sure you're comfortable with it. Steel cells in, way, way back, they made steel cells in the past, they were poor products, poor materials, poor metals, poor paint finishes, and they used to rust, and they were really horrible. They put a polyurethane finish on these, that you literally can't scratch with a knife or a key, it's a baked blend kind of finish, you know, it's actually a Sherwin-Williams product. The other thing we see value is they come done, they're prepackaged unit, so the toilets in there, the bunks are in there, all the various fixtures are in there, and they're coated as once. When they come in, you don't have security clocking you have to deal with, you don't have any, any kind of subs that have to install different things, light fixtures and whatever, it all comes complete in the unit. And the efficiency of putting that in, it's like a plug-and-play. Put them in, they stack up, they're good to go. Again, we're seeing these used more and more throughout the country. There's still, still block options, there's still precast options. When you have a tight footprint, the steel cell actually does help. The other thing too, in a steel cell, because of the way they lay out, all the plumbing and mechanical connections and whatnot are on the backs of the cells in those chases we showed in the plans, wrapping the perimeter. So if you have a maintenance person that needs to come in, because you've got a clogged toilet or whatever, they never come into your secured perimeter, you're built, they're actually always, they're monitored, there's, we put cameras back there, we put door position switches, we make sure staff takes them, but you never have to, they don't have to bring their tools or anything else into a housing unit, which again, is a staff operational issue, you have to lock your門, you have to do all kinds of other things, you don't have to do that. Trying to think some of the other things. So anyway, there's a number of facilities, this shows them being stacked up. Again, they, they come in, they create, they drop them in with little lifts, when they do the mezzanine section, you can see this, basically, here's the base level, and they're designed so the other ones just stack on top of each other. They're very, very efficient units. You know, and then the finished product basically looks like that. You take and attach the railing system to it, the stair system to it, again, the doors come in place, the only thing they're setting in is the hardware, and they're set to go. So again, it's, it's like kicking the tires on the car. Reason we suggested the tour is you need to be comfortable with what, what you buy as far as the product. And there's, there's a number of facilities around the country that have been done, and more and more, this is the interior, like I was saying, all this comes from the factory like this. This happens to be an ADA cell, but, you know, all the things, the bunks, toilets, mirrors. Finding more and more facilities are doing showers in the, in the cells, it's a management issue. They can't run the water all day long, they're on timer, you know, and you can control and shut it off, but you're not having to move inmates in and out for their showers, you're not having to deal with some of that, they can actually do it within their cell in a certain amount of time. It's a management thing. But again, I think Red Mill County is fairly close to here, Red Mills have been installed, we did those, we did those back. Oh, shoot, I'm getting old.
You have town close to Red Mill County, since I don't.
Olivia, Olivia, Minnesota.
Okay.
And I want to say, I want to say it's probably been in there ten to twelve years now. So anyway, they're, they're one of the closer ones, I mean, there's others that we could talk about too. Lyon County did something, it was a different firm, I'm not sure who they used, I can find out, Lyon County's not far either, I can find out what Lyon County used.
Well, is there an interest to, we'll take a look at this. Did you see any yes? Everybody else?
I just have a question for the sheriff. Do you all have an opinion?
No. This, I, I wasn't, I am not familiar with the steel cells. I, Pennington County had the block, and most jails I know have the block, so though I'm, I'm interested in this.
I wonder what many of ours do with their new cells.
I don't know, I'll have to check.
The block, the block has been tried and true, you're a little tight on footprint on area, so would it pack layout a little bit if you have a block?
I'd like to see.
The other thing that happens with the block that we talked about is what you, what you have with steel cells.
With everything inside them already. Because the block cells, you can't put the stuff inside.
No, and that's why you end up with these little deals that do this, in a, in a standard block, where your cells do this.
Which would be a thicker, a thicker wall, right?
A thicker wall, plus all of your plumbing and mechanical are out here in front of that area where you're walking. That's the way, that's the way you do block construction, is you do cells like this, so there's a cell, here's a cell, here's your plumbing and mechanical in the front, they dump it to winter, air chase stuff.
The other thing I like about the steel cells is you're talking about a baked on finish that you can't scratch. You know, if you look at our jail cells now, they're, you know, we paint them over with, with paint, and within a week, they're scratched up, and it sucks.
You know, it's painting, so difficult, it's all about the proper prep of the application. And block can be difficult, especially in shower areas, we have a lot of moisture. That's part of the reason I like the steel cell stuff too, because it's such a baked on finish in the factory, that you don't have issues with painting in the showers. So.
Have any of your, when we're talking about soft stuff, is any of the jails that you've been building, putting in the grinders, or putting in the, for the?
Both.
Can you, okay. So that's something that you can figure in, in the soft cost?
I love the grinders.
It's feasible for them to put the grinders in?
Because the grinder's truly what it's called, but there's a manufacturer.
Yeah, double, doubles.
There's one called.
It keeps it from them plugging up the plumbing.
It's like a, it's like a garbage disposal.
Inmates can be challenging, and some of them will flush things down the toilet, like shirts or towels or things like this to specific.
We flush out problems.
To cause problems. We had one county actually require, it was actually not the county, it was the city, the city that had an ordinance that says, if you're going to do these types of facilities, you have to have a grinder in the system, because they didn't want, they didn't want causing problems with their waste plan. So we had to have a grinder.
These are, these are details we can talk about, another, do we want to take the jail visit? Are there any yes?
I'd, I want to go.
All right. We'll, we'll.
Fair for you guys to see, to see it, if that's an option, especially if you're not familiar with it.
I'm not familiar with this steel cell.
We'll have, we'll have Bruce set up some options, dates that are available, and we'll see.
What days, just quickly, what days to begin working for this group, I mean, you guess? The commission meeting, you're on Tuesday, are Thursdays and Fridays better for people? I mean, what do you, what day of the week typically works better?
It's on the Thursday or Friday.
About a month ahead, about a month ahead notice.
So we need to know all the dates, so we can plan around them, I mean, it's.
If you tell us thirty days tomorrow, it's open schedule, we'll get together, or do some kind of a survey.
Most, most facilities are very accommodating and say, yes, you can come in there. So it's really whatever works for yours. We'll talk about, see, the best way you can do it is do these survey monkeys, where you get three, four options.
A doodle pole, friends, that's a doodle pole.
Is that a doodle pole? Instead of survey monkey, you like doodle pole?
Survey, survey monkey is for like surveys.
That's a survey, okay. Doodle pole. You said correct.
Doodle pole, doodle pole's real intuitive and very easy, you know, when you have three days, you click on it, say accept, and you're done. So it works really good.
Doodle poles are.
We're talking about open discussion, I think at this point, we're going to meet on the twelfth for our next commission meeting, when we will select. Because our, I would prefer we do it a call of the chair or the call of three commissioners, because I don't know when our next discussion needs to be. We'll see this process, because we obviously need to get together and discuss the RFP, but I think we can do that, that may be special. And then I think we can decide from there, what are we going to want to go with our next meeting. I know Bruce will have some meetings with the sheriff and their department based on internal type things, but that's, that includes us, if you want to go. We can. Sound okay? We'll develop it as we go here. I don't want to set a meeting, we have nothing to discuss.
Before we adjourn too carefully, I, so we did, we have reached out to a number of geotechnical companies. I'll tell you, I was, I contacted Geotech Engineering, I tried to contact as many, I'm not sure there's anybody locally, no, there ain't been locally, they were all in Sioux Falls, yeah. So Geotech, Northern Technologies, Old Tech, AET, it turns out the only two that I found that are in there is AET and Geotech. Geotech gave us proposal, we identified ten locations, so what we do is, once we have a footprint for a building, we talk to our structural engineer and say, okay, where should we have those boards? So it's hard to see here, but there was a spot here, and there's a spot here, and there's a spot here. Our structural identified one here, but it's back in your secure kind of compound area, in our rec area, we're not going to do that, I told them no. So these three here, one here, one here, and they need a couple of years. So we got to make sure they miss trees, they miss tree roots, and we got to make sure they coordinate that. But we had identified basically nine areas to do soil boards. Geotech did come back with a proposal of fifty-five hundred dollars, they do need to qualify some things, they had something that the county were moving snow or something like this, and I don't feel that's appropriate, I feel it's their responsibility to do whatever prep they need to do. Still waiting for AETs, prior to your twelfth meeting, I'll make sure you have those two geotechnical boring proposals, and then the commission can kind of look at them, I mean, based on a bid, or if the commission wants, we can, I think it's probably better to wait until the March twelfth meeting and let you select.
Get those students, and you have a perfect, so they're wanting, as you said, you work with both, just look at the bids.
Bids.
Okay. We'll have those by the twelfth. Okay. All right. We've got five minutes left to adjourn, is there any other comments from the commissioners? If not, thank you all for coming. Do you have anything you would like to comment on the items we discussed? If you do, we've got five minutes, if anybody has any comments on the items we discussed, but I'd love to give you an opportunity. Nobody's jumping up and down. All right, all right, well, thank you all for coming, thank you guys, thank you Bruce. We are adjourned, I guess, thank you. I bet you guys are meeting on time.